And a great notice that the meeting is being held by the Belmar Board of Education on Thursday, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-four at seven P. M. has been provided in accordance with the requirements of Chapter Two Thirty-One Public Laws nineteen seventy-five. Notice the meeting was posted on the bulletin board of the principal's office of the Belmar Elementary School, eleven oh one Main Street, Belmar, New Jersey, on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. And notice the meeting was transmitted to the Esber Park Press, the Coast Star, the municipal community municipal clerk of the borough of Belmar, and Lake Como School District on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Let's have the flags lit.
Life, liberty, and justice for all. United States of America, and to your republic, for which it stands, a nation, a land, universal, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, we'll see the whole roll call.
Sherry Adams. Vincent Allmeyer.
Here.
Kimbo Check.
Here.
Frank Conklin.
Yes.
Janine Fay.
Here.
Rebecca Herbert.
Here.
Michelle Lomas.
Here.
Jennifer Nicolai. Paul Alden.
Here.
Michelle Cartaglia.
Here.
All right, we have a couple of presentations. First, we have our auditor here today.
Well, thirty persons.
Oh, I missed comments for the public, sorry. Didn't mean to do that to you guys. Any comments from the public on any agenda item? Sorry about that. Skip right ahead.
Good evening, everybody. One of the things I gave to Mike and handed out to everybody, I just did a little summary of the audit report or, you know, the findings and everything to make it easier for everybody to follow along what I'm talking, talking about tonight. But first to start off with, I'm happy to report that the review of the financial records of the district contained no recommendations. Everything went well. Mike gave us all the materials that we needed to perform the audit. One thing I always like to point out what Mike does, which is I think free, is during the year if there was any problems or questions, he contacts us and we can work out a, a solution. So there's no surprises at the year end or anything like that. So everything during the course of the year goes smooth audit-wise. I also broke, on the paper I gave you, I broke down what the fund balances at, at June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. It's at four million, two hundred thousand, one sixty-five. That's a decrease from the previous year of three hundred and eighty-four thousand, five thirty-seven. Part of that could probably be attributed to each year you're budgeting fund balance to offset the tax increase or anything like that. So if things are, if the budget is, you know, a hundred percent, you know, your balance is going to go down each year because you're budgeting some money to offset tax increases. But your, your fund balance is broken down into like various areas at the end of the year. The first item is designated for twenty-three, twenty-four budget the year we're in. You're using one million, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. That's a combination of using tuition reserve money, excess surplus, and unassigned money to offset any increases. Your but, your fund balance is also made up of two reserves, a maintenance reserve and a capital reserve. You have reserve for encumbrances, that's the purchase orders that are rolled over and being paid in two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four. There's an item here for excess surplus. That's at three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight fifty-eight. That's the amount of money you must put into your twenty-four, twenty-five budget. You could put more in, but you have to put a minimum of, of the three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight fifty-eight. The rest of the, you have unassigned fund balance, that's basically your free surplus at year end. The other thing I've been pointing out to all my districts is that the ESAR funds from the federal government are ending. So all that money, and Belmar did receive a substantial amount of money. So you're not going to see that, you know, money anymore unless we have another pandemic, which hopefully we won't. But that's, I'm just warning everybody that, you know, you've used that money to like fund some programs or different things. You're not going to have that, you know, catch infusion anymore. So you're basically going to have to make some decisions going forward about how to handle things and stuff like that going forward. But overall, you know, the audit went smoothly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions about? Okay.
Thanks, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Did I stall enough for the?
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Everybody have a great evening. And if anybody ever has questions around the course of the year, you can always reach us via Michael, we'll answer any question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Everybody have a great evening.
Thanks very much.
You too. And then we have a more fun presentation too.
Yes. So the BES Board of Education would like to take a few minutes to acknowledge one of our own, honor one of our own teachers. The St. Patrick's Day Belmar Parade has a rich history of fifty-one years here in Belmar, and we're ecstatic to hear that Megan Levis, along with her sisters, the Castorly Sisters, all of them, the three of them, will be honored as grand marshals for this year's parade. So Megan plays many roles in this school. She's a teacher, she's a mom, and she's a community member, all wrapped into one person. So she brings a lot of value. She brings her community to our school every day with her and her kids. She can be counted on for her strong instructional practice and the care she gives to the students that come here every day. So, you know, some of them probably her daughter's friends, but they may not be, but she cares for them just as much. So we really appreciate that. And every year she rallies the troops for the parade and sells T-shirts and pushes like, let's go, let's get a whole big team out there to the parade and does fundraising. So it's not a surprise that they're honoring her this year and her sisters for all their efforts. But she plays a big role in that. We want to congratulate Mrs. Levis and thank you for continuously representing BES, our school, our community, not only in school but outside of it as well. So please, if you take this small token of our appreciation, the honor of your efforts and commitment to our school and representing ourselves as well.
Green today.
Bring your students.
Change around his brand into his green today.
You don't have to wear this for the parade, but there's a scarf in there for you.
Oh, thank you.
Irish scarf to cut together.
Oh, thank you.
I don't know if you guys want to.
Yeah, no, let's take it.
Sure.
You can be in the picture with us.
Molly, you want to be in now? You gave me a hard time about getting changed, so. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I actually had a lot of the kids, the board members here, so thank you very much. I appreciate it a lot, so.
And you guys have some events coming up too?
We have, we have a week off, thanks for this, on this weekend, and then we have Boathouse on the seventeenth, and then the last fundraiser at the Friendly's and the Shalalies on the twenties.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-seventh, I don't remember the days. And then the mass and breakfast on March second, the day before the parade, and then the big day on the third, so. Yes, a lot going on, but thank you very much. I appreciate it. I actually saw a former student last night at the gym, and he was even very excited for me. So it was really nice to see the impact it has on everybody, so really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ready? Thank you. Put it out of your hair.
So everybody's.
Thank you for waiting for Mark to get here too. I appreciate it. He took an early flight home to make it, so.
Where did you fly out of, Molly?
He's in Miami, where you know. Really the hardship. All right, ready? We'll go home now. Thank you very much, guys. They don't want to be in school any longer.
All right, so we have a superintendence report.
All right, so we have a lot to report. So a few of fun and interesting things that are going on program-wise for the school. Our eighth graders will be joining the sending districts in a book club reading of Believe by Eric Legrand. Eric Legrand was a New Jersey born, born and bred football player that played at Rutgers, and he was actually paralyzed during one of their games. He was actually my neighbor. He lived two houses down from me as a kid. Yeah, so I remember his face as a kid, like playing in the street football with kids. He lived two doors down from me on, in, on Walnut Street, Avenue Street, Avenue. And I remember him as a kid, like playing in the street. I was probably in high school going to college when he was like nine, ten, so. But it's kind of interesting. I haven't seen him since, so when I see him at this event, Mounds is hosting, not only they're doing the book club with Thunder, Thunder Road Books that was able to get us the books through, but they're also sponsoring him coming in. So Mounds invited us, so a lot of the sending district eighth graders are going to join them towards the end of the school year. So a really cool culminating event for our kids and a really strong message about perseverance. So I think it's going to be really excellent.
So they will be reading the book?
They'll be reading the book. I just got the copies today. So, you know, since Thunder Robes was helping to sponsor it, we ordered the books through them. And so I think it's really exciting, a really cool thing. So the St. Patty's Day Parade is coming up. We're excited to represent BES there, you know, with our band and our cheerleaders, they're going to be there. Congrats to our G O B champs, Max Warman and Logan Omack. They were at the Spring Lake Heights Regional Competition today. They represented BES really, really well. They said it was the toughest class of competitors they've ever had. I don't think anybody got more than a couple of questions wrong, and some of these questions were like impossible. And I think it mattered like when you got the questions right or wrong, how many points you got because of the later rounds, the points, the questions are very difficult. But Logan and Max both did an outstanding job, and we're very proud of them. The Wizard of Oz is coming up, so March eighth and ninth, so the show's coming together. Really exciting. We have a new sensory hallway downstairs in our pre-K hallway, and so this is a place to help kids with self-regulation and if we need to get them out of their class to do a little bit, to, to help them center themselves a little bit. Sometimes they go through these little obstacle courses of touch and feel, and then they kind of help somebody center and get back to focus. So that's something that's been typical in a lot of school districts lately, so we decided something that we were ready for here. Facilities update, the DBW, thank you very much. I know you guys are listening out there on that video for helping us out with the snow that we got. They always come by every time we get snow to help us make sure that we're clear. It wasn't as much as we thought, but I think everybody enjoyed this snow day. What else? High Justice Tutoring is going really well. Second round of enrichment programming went out to families, and that will start soon. Our third, our third bus is here. My apologies to the Z M V for the shot I took at them last meeting, did hit the papers. The Z M V, you guys are excellent. My bad. No, well, it's okay. It's no big deal, not blaming anybody. Congrats to our, it's my own fault. Congrats to our sports teams. Thank you to our coaches, our volunteer coaches, and our parents for their support. All our eighth graders, you know, were going to miss their contributions. The coach, coaches acknowledged them either at their final game or at their party. I think the boys' basketball party was today. The girls, you know, they had their, they had a really nice season, they learned a lot, and they won a few games. The boys were nine and five, they had a really successful season. And then also our wrestling program, and that recognition for eighth graders, that's going to grow throughout the years as well. It's something I think we should continue to do. I think it started pre-pandemic, and when the pandemic hit, everything kind of hit the brakes. I want to reintroduce that and continue to make that happen. Some of you reached out to me, I thought it's important as well. And our wrestling team had a really successful season. They had fifty boys and girls on their team this year. Seventeen were eighth graders on the team. They got in second place in the white division tournament, which was on the board here. Eleven or, what was it, sixteen of the twenty made semifinals. Eleven of the sixteen medal. We got four third places, four silvers, and three gold medals at the white division tournament. We had three students move on to the county tournament where Gavin Anderson won the county for his weight class at one thirty-two, and he's one of our, Belmar's own kids. He is an excellent kid and really excellent wrestler. And so we're really proud of him and so, and the wrestling team and everything they've done so far. Everybody said we've got the nicest mat and, you know, we're in. I'll say we probably do. But that's, that's really it for my report. A lot of positive news, thanks for your support, everybody.
Very good. All right, can we have approval of the minutes for the January fourth regular board meeting? This is check, this is Herbert. Okay, any discussion on that? Ask me? Okay. Roll call.
Mrs. Omack?
Yes.
Mrs. Check?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Herbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Lomas?
Yes.
Mr. Alden?
Yes.
Mrs. Cartaglia? Mrs. Fay?
Yes. Personnel items?
All right, personnel items. So there's a lot of personnel items, one through six here, that are either resignations or retirements. These retirements, some of them are now, one was starting now, one's at the end of the year, and one is September thirtieth of next year. So people are just getting their ducks in a row, and they're ready, they're putting in their letters. We encourage people to do it now because the timing helps for their retirement ending and when their payments begin. And then obviously we have a couple of resignations. Mr. Bus, the first one, he's going back to college full-time. He's going to college to be a special line teacher. He had the time to help us for a little bit, but he wants to go back to full-time. He's a great kid. And maybe we'll see him again at some point. He really did an outstanding job for us. Miss Osborne's moving on to a different position somewhere else, and unfortunately, Mr. Deruge is going to be moving over to Lakewood. I think it was a decision that was hard for him to make, but I told him he's still our coach, and there's no bridge burned here, you know, like we still want him as our wrestling coach, and, and he's a big part of our community, and hope he'll continue to stay part of our community in that way. I hope so. I told him, there's no reason that you shouldn't. I'm not going to tell you not to, because he's really excellent.
Yeah.
So if he, I, I know he did it before he left, before he left there, he was on Lakewood, and he coached, and then he came to us. So if he goes back, maybe, we'll see. That's his decision, obviously, but I'm encouraging you to.
Maybe if you get that wrestling spotlight, he'll stay on.
So, and then the next thing is to approve, approve part-time appointment for Gianna Moreta, for school psychologist, where we have to kind of back some of the other point. And so we needed some part-time support, and so we put in for emergency cert for her for a step one prorated. Time Catherine Quinn for a replacement teacher for step one. Then we have Steph Brown, and then Mosadabak for play chaperones, some ESAR funds here for the after the school day funding between our enrichment and our Wizard of Oz show to approve two teachers to be chaperones for district dance. It's usually coming up in March as well. Superintend has the authority to hire members to fill the recent unfilled positions. These are specifically power positions, so with Mrs. Osborne leaving, trying to fill a power position, we have the authority to do that for the next meeting. To approve the following certified staff for academic support, Erin Dillon, Alex Flores, and Michael Klaus, and substitute Wendy Morgan, and approve Susan Hippie from twenty hours to twenty-five hours a week at her rate for a little, a little extra supervision in the afternoon in the middle school hallway, which the afternoons are always kind of there. That's all the personnel items.
One, um, Fran is, um, should we?
Mrs. Jim Forte is already, she already left.
Oh, she did?
Yes, but Mrs. Otte took over her spot the day, you know, the day that she won initially, that she left initially on leave. Mrs. Otte stepped in, and so she's been our teacher for like over a month now.
Okay.
She's excellent. If I were to hand my own kids off to a teacher, I wouldn't want it to be her. So, you know, from the original teacher.
Can I have somebody move the personnel items? And then we can ask more questions. Mrs. Check, Mrs. Lomas, second. Hope by the book. Now, if anybody has any questions or comments? No, no, I don't. Sorry.
So are those positions, most of them are going to be absorbed or replaced next year?
Uh, depends. So some of them are going to be absorbed because with, you know, as the auditor mentioned, ESAR funds are running out, so we're trying to consolidate, recognizing that in some cases we had been supporting our school and some of our programs with those funds. So, you know, not all of them, obviously, you know, we need those paras. Mr. Deruge's position, we're evaluating to see, is there a way to consolidate? Because we do have a lot of people that have a lot of different skill sets, so in some cases you can have two people fill their job with half their time if they have the time and the schedule to do it. So it's, schedules are something for next year that we're working on already to recognize what staffing we need for next year. So that's constantly under evaluation, but especially during a transition year like this, moving out of those ESAR funds in the pandemic and everything we've had, we're having to set up our district for how we will operate for the next five years, starting with next year.
And in those next five years, is the population increasing or decreasing or slowing down?
Traditionally, well, I guess if you take a look at the history of our district, it's been decreasing, but it hasn't been decreasing over the last couple of years.
Okay.
The last few years, we've been over four hundred hanging out there, but, you know, at some point you're like five hundred. Something you can't.
Went down like a hundred and thirty kids in ten years.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we've been holding steady for a little bit here, and we hope that we stay there.
But you're adding a pre-K.
But pre-K is different, right? And that's also through pre-K funds. So we're applying for a pre-K fund, so that, that would be funded through the state pre-K program, not through.
Unfortunately, is that a lot of people lose the pre-K?
Right, but I think that that's changing.
Is that what you're saying?
And then they leave, yeah.
Yeah.
It's disappointing because we have so many, right, pre-K.
Yeah, and, and so, yeah, and so for me, like, I know our pre-K teachers are strong.
They're great.
And when people get in here, if they take a look around, they'll recognize the value of the school, and hopefully it will stay.
And they'll stay it.
That's how I stayed here, we went here because we, we kind of used the pre-K and then like, oh, it's just, we're here, and that was great.
And I'm hearing lots of conversations like that.
Yeah.
Nope.
It's changing. All righty. Questions up there? All right. Education and operations.
All right. Sorry, I needed some water. My voice is, as you guys know, on a down slope here.
We didn't vote on it.
Did you guys not vote?
No, we can't vote on it.
So I thought we didn't do roll call.
Yes. Sorry, no ma'am.
We did. We moved it, but then we didn't. We moved it, but we didn't do roll call, sorry.
Sorry. All right, so Mrs. Omack?
Yes.
Mrs. Check?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Herbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Lomas?
Yes.
Mr. Alden?
Yes.
Mrs. Cartaglia?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fay?
Yes.
No, I was writing at the same, I was writing at the same time.
All right. Now we do education operations.
All right, so the first two items there have to do with our roof project, authorizing execution delivery of grant agreement, the DOE. So we got a grant agreement for that four hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant to help pay for our metal roof. Big long-term project, a big successful get on, for, for Belmar. Submission of CRDC, that's a data collection report, travel, professional development, on the board schedule, field trips, and board field trip schedule approval, and the approval of the application waiver for square footage for preschool suspension aid. When we're applying for preschool suspension aid, we have to give a waiver for our works. You know, that's, that's a, a shortness for operations.
Let someone else do the education operations. This is Herbert, I'll second.
Questions, since we had this snow day, you were trying to end school early so we could get the roof done, right?
Yes.
Is, we have, is the sun and?
So this is something we'll have to consider, right? Because the, the good thing is we have a hundred and eighty-one days scheduled for students typically, and so that gets us to the fourteenth. Now, that snow day pushes us to the following Monday, so fifteenth, seventeenth. Now, the only tricky part with that is we would like to get the roof started sooner. It, it, it's possible to remove one of those days because we only require to have one eighty. So we could say, let's end on the fourteenth, and then basically on the fifteenth, these guys will be up here demoing the roof, because nobody else is ending this early. We purposefully created this calendar knowing that if we got out early, we would have these construction crews to ourselves for at least a week before everybody else got out and they started doing their progress. So that's a good point, and I think it may be something that we talk about, saying, hey, let's, if we don't have any other snow days, let's end on the fourteenth. So that's a good point. It could be something that we decide tonight under new business, if you want to, if you want to discuss it then. All right.
So it makes sense to end on Friday and on Monday.
Yeah.
Of course.
Yeah. Questions up there? Um, what's number three?
Uh, CRDC is a civil rights data collection report. It's a national report that I have to send in regarding our enrollment and our demographics. And so it's just a technical report that I sent out, there's no, nothing too crazy about it.
All right. Roll call everyone.
Mrs. Omack?
Yes.
Mrs. Check?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Herbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Lomas?
Yes.
Mr. Alden?
Yes.
Mrs. Cartaglia?
Yes.
Mrs. Fay?
Yes. Okay, finance?
All right, so finance, just, we have our, the monthly board certification saying that as of January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, no budgetary line items has been overspent. For resolutions, I have number one, just that we accept the annual comprehensive financial report, which is what our auditor was just presenting before. Number two is the bills and one point nine million for the month of January. Number three is they allow me to pay and any bills that come in for the month of February and then report them at the March meeting, and also to make any transfers in between the board meetings. Number four is approval for the board secretaries and treasury report for the month of December. Number five, and number six is just our monthly transfer reports for December. And then number seven is the monthly trans, uh, certification of the secretaries and treasury report for January the first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Very good. Anyone want to move finance? This is Omack, I'll second. Anybody have any questions? Comments? Okay.
Mrs. Alden?
Yes.
Mrs. Check?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Herbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Lomas?
Yes.
Mr. Alden?
Yes.
Mrs. Cartaglia?
Yes.
Mrs. Fay?
Yes. And we actually have a math bond report next week. Um, so we met Tuesday, um, so a couple of things, they had a bunch of honoring presentations of different things. They do student of the month for freshmen, sophomores, junior, and senior, and this month, Dylan Haywood actually got the freshman student of the month, so that was nice to see. They honored the football program because they had six hundred wins totaling since the program started this past season, so that was nice to see. And then they honored the, um, the girls soccer team, the varsity team, so they were B-North division champions this year. They were also their short conference tournament semifinalists, and they were also state tournament semifinalists, so that was exciting. And Renee is a part of that team, and she had a bunch of athletes this year, and was[1694.02] And was one of the players on the team. She did really, really well. It was exciting. I can't remember what the record was.
I don't have a record, but it was, it was like the first time they had done this since like 1980.
Oh, yeah.
It was a really long stretch, yeah.
Yeah, so it was really nice. Um, and then they also honored the boys soccer team because they were B-North division co-champions, shore conference tournament semifinalists also. And then state tournament semifinalists in the central jersey group, too. And I think the only one left on that team is Patrick Woodrow. I don't think there's any other boys from Belmar on that team anymore. But, um, so it was really, really nice to see that. They, let's see, oh, they talked about the STEM day that's going to be here?
Here?
Uh huh. Oh, here in, is it March?
About on March, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're going to have a STEM day here, the elementary, not the, the high school, right?
Right, right, yeah, 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 yeah.
So, so, yeah, and so we've been collaborating with all of our sending districts on these different programs. Some of them that we offer, some of them that they offer. And so just like that Eric Legrand thing where we're going to Mounds, we're going to have a STEM day here. And so it's really exciting, yeah.
They did their seal of biliteracy test this year. They had about 50 kids between Spanish, French and Italian that took it and about 52% of them actually passed. So that was a nice, successful thing for them. They're still working on the curriculum for the international baccalaureate program. I'll say that right.
Baccalaurate.
Thank you. And so the sophomores that will be juniors next year will have the opportunity to opt into that program as juniors. If they're a junior, they can take classes next year that are offered in that program, but they obviously won't have the certification of that at the end. They did talk about the calendar for next year, so they're going to start on the 5th. I believe it was, that's on Thursday. And so I believe the sophomores come in, I mean, the freshmen come in on Wednesday. Everyone else starts happy, I mean, looking on the 5th. And they're ending on the 20th. They did put in two snow days, so we'll see how that ends up. SATs are coming up, so the, it is digital from now on. And the date for that is March 9th. And the last day to register is the 23rd. You can late register until the 27th, but you get fees for that. And then they're also working on renovations in the next year coming from the, sorry, coming from the bond that they had last year. So they're doing, this year they're going to be doing the locker rooms. They're going to do the gym hallway bathrooms and then they're going to be working on their band room. And then on their track and field team they have, so they have their regular field, the football fields and that they use the partial track on. But then anybody who's throwing, shot put, all that kind of stuff is actually tucked back around. I don't know if anybody even knows this. It's tucked back around the woods, kind of like if you go towards the turf field, you make a right, it's way back over there. So they're working on bringing all that up onto the field area so that the coaches can easily help and, and coach all that. So that's part of all of their renovations. If there was anything else. I think that might be it.
Really?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
We don't have any communications, do we?
No communications.
Personnel items.
Okay. Any old business anyone wants to bring up? Okay. New business?
So you want to bring up the.
Oh, yeah.
Ending on a Friday at the end of the school year and reducing it to 180, which we've done before.
Yeah.
You know, we've had the situation where we have, we're ending on a Friday on our schedule. I think it was my first year, I called the snow day my first year, a legitimate snow day. So, yeah, I mean, we can, we can move that.
What happens to be a snow day?
Then we'd, we'd have to come back on a Monday at least. You'd hope that you wouldn't have another snow day, but every day with, with our crunch schedule for trying to get the construction roof started, it's better. I guess you cross that bridge when you get through it.
The chances of having another snow day are slim to none.
It's going to be 55.
If we do wind up with another, we're going to be virtual for the kids, too.
I wish it could, but that would require acceptance from the county superintendent. And unless I can prove to him that we need it to be virtual, he probably won't accept it because the state won't, wouldn't let him do it. If we have like an emergency where the only way they'd let us do that is if you had three days in a row that you lost school because of some major issue. And then after, on the fourth day, you might be able to virtual. It's part of one of the plans I put together, but that's the only way they would do it. Unless there's something, you know, crazy or I can be like, listen, there's a crane on our front lawn. You gotta make it to virtual.
I mean, they don't do anything the last couple of days anyway, so.
Yeah, I mean, to come back for a Monday doesn't make any sense. You know, for the kids and even as, even more so for the construction to get it started before everybody else can. It puts us in a strong position to get it done, get it finished. And if there's delays, we're still back, we'll still have time to get back and build it. So if we want to move to reduce, you know, the days from 181 to 180 and finish on a Friday.
Thanks for doing that for it.
And so, Mrs. Omack, you're making the motion to take away the one snow day.
Yes.
Can I have a second?
Second. Any other questions about it? Okay. Roll call. Or any other new business?
Today you can be a hero with your kids.
All in favor?
Yeah, there we go.
I just have one thing on new business. So the lease up for the Montessori is going to be up at the end of this year. So we are just in negotiations, just trying to see if they still want the space. They did say they do, but we just got to figure out that. So I'll be bringing that once we start talking about actual value, I mean, a dollar or not. And I'll bring that to the finance committee, which I do want to have a finance committee just as a heads up, uh, or meeting, probably in about two weeks.
And you like that, right?
Yeah.
It's working out, is what I mean, isn't it?
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, yeah, so it's, it's been good. Their, their schedules are different than our schedules for drop-off and pickup, so that kind of, that's really helpful.
Seems like.
And we got a few of their students, right? This year? I know we got at least two.
Possibly.
Oh, I mean, I just know.
I mean, yeah, there's family. We know about, I know of one of these families that has like one here and one there, so. It's, it's kind of neat that people can do that easily, you know?
Because I think it goes up to sixth grade, right? So then. Yeah, sixth and then we had, I think we came to, to seventh grade.
Oh, that's what you're saying.
That's what, that's what I was saying, yeah.
Which is a good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you have two students that finished sixth grade and then. Oh, yeah, that's.
Okay.
And but you're looking at like, you know, values, rent values and what they should be.
Yeah. Reach out to you.
Okay, anytime.
All right. Roll call. Oh, we did that for our new leases? No, we didn't. We just did.
We just did.
Okay. All right, are there any comments from public on any? Okay, that's it.
We got some dates to remember. School closed on February 12th. We will have a professional development event here for our staff. There's going to be a couple of other districts that are going to be joining us. Everybody else's, our sending districts are on vacation, but there will be, Wshport will be coming by. A few people from Wshport, a few people from North Carolina. Our spelling bees on the 13th coming up really soon. PTO meetings then as well, school's closed on President's Day from 16th to the 19th. The Belmar parade, as mentioned before, the Wizard of Oz, another PTO meeting and then another board meeting on March 14th.
We also have a fashion show.
Oh, the fashion show, 29th, is it? Yes.
And I got stuff for them to do in the show. I dove the piece, I was like, you know what, we have plenty of money, you don't have to do this. I'm like, oh, cool. I'm going to be eighth graders.